On the agenda is our roll call in recognition of visitors. Yvonne?
Hi, our visitors are-
Janine, thank you.
Yes, I am, thank you. Our visitors are Dick Carter, Roberta Everslaj, and Paul Snyder.
Thank you for joining us again. I'm gonna do something I don't think I've ever done before at a board meeting that is always reflected in our minutes. I'm going to announce the presence of a quorum. It's in our minutes every time, and I don't think any chair has ever done that. You may have done it when, you may have done it right when you were chair, Dr. Cook, but we do have a quorum. The next item on our agenda is the open-
Mr. Chair, I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you.[56.28][56.28](Laughter).
Good job.
It's a first, both that I did something right and that you congratulated me.[61.21][61.21](Laughter). The open forum section of our board meeting is an opportunity for the, anybody from the public to make comments. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are allowed up to five minutes unless there's a group of speakers or a number of speakers, in which case the chair can limit that to a shorter period of time. In order to be recognized, speakers must register at the door before the open forum session. When addressing the board, registered speakers should remain at the podium, are expected to be civil and respectful, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond, in this setting, to comments made from the podium, particularly where those concern personnel matters or student issues or matters under, being addressed through our established grievance procedures or otherwise being addressed by the board. I don't have any signed up speakers for this evening's open forum session. I do want to mention something now. Roberta Everslaj is here today, as she always is, from the, as a representative of the Legal Women Voters. The League will host a forum of community college candidates that will be on the ballot in the November election. That forum will be scheduled here on campus, we anticipate, in the Hudson Auditorium sometime in the second week of October. We will announce the date and time for sure at our September board meeting. But we do have eight candidates for four positions for the board, seven candidates for four positions in the November election, so that we appreciate the League helping by putting on that forum again this year. Awards and recognitions?
Thank you, Trustee Chair Musil. I know Trustee Lindstrom is part, a member of the chief's ambassadors. We have with us tonight some student ambassadors, and so I'd like to ask you all to come up to the podium.[178.15][178.15](Applause). Boy, imagine the applause you're gonna get after you say a few words.[196.84][196.84](Laughter). First of all, I'd like to introduce to you Ryan Pritchard.
Hello.
Ryan.
Hello.
Sarah Cobble.
Anna Lim.
These students are part of the crew that help us now in the president's office. And you may walk by, you'll see them manning the front desk, the receptionist's desk, and they do all kinds of different things. It's incredible when students are given the opportunity of what they can do. And not only can they assist and be a part of the campus fabric, but also their involvement on campus is one step closer to their own success. Statistically, when students are involved on campus in a position like theirs, their chance for successes are much higher. I'm just gonna ask you to step to the microphone, Ryan. And where are you from?
I'm from Olathe, Kansas.
What high school do you go to?
Olathe East.
Olathe East, fantastic, thank you. Sarah?
I'm from Gardner, Kansas, so I went to Gardner-Rodgerton High School.
That's very good. Anna?
I am originally from South Korea, but I grew up in San Francisco East Bay, and I went to Chinese Christian schools.
That's very good. Afterwards, Anna will have a service breakout session on South Korea and today's issues over there.[274.08][274.08](Laughter). Thank you all, thank you for your contribution to the president's office. You're doing a great job. You remind us all why we're here, and we're here because of the students, so I want to thank you for that. So, thank you.[286.88][286.88](Applause). Now, I also have some students down from Student Life. Do we have, are they here this evening?
These are our students, I think, from Student Life as well.
Okay, great, good to know. Okay, that's great, thank you very much. I just wanna, didn't want to miss anybody.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes the recognition.
Thank you, ladies. It's been a pleasure to come into the president's office and have you greet me. I'm sure the rest of the board feels the same way. The next item on the agenda is our college lobbyist report. Mr. Carter, we missed you last month. Very much looking forward to your report tonight.
See if I can remember how to do this, in case you've forgotten who I am.[327.19][327.19](Laughter). It's been a quiet summer. It's nice that fall is in motion and school is getting back in session, and with that also comes a little bit of legislative activity. I'll talk about some of the committees that have been appointed here in a minute. The continuing good news is that the budget continues to be on the uptick. Eight point six million more collected in the month of July than was expected. I wouldn't get too overly excited yet. Keep in mind that we're still dealing with adjusted numbers from April and November of the months prior, as well as not many of the tax increases have gone into effect yet. That number does reflect, though, the additional collections from employees or employers that would have a different rate adjustment for their individual income tax after the, after Senate Bill 30 passed during the legislative session. I think we'll begin to see more of an uptick come January, but some things that are concerning, sales tax numbers are still relatively flat, and you can kind of gauge the economy, especially for large goods, by watching those numbers. So, there's, it's a little too early to tell yet. We're not out of the woods by any means, but this does represent the third month running where there has been an increase in the collections, in the revenue collections. The Legislative Coordinating Council met yesterday afternoon and approved a list of committees that will meet over the course of the fall months. Those committees take up study topics that were either discussed and put off during the regular legislative session, or are part of agendas that will help develop bills that come in January for the legislative session in 2018. The ones that we'll be watching very closely are the Legislative Budget Committee, and those committee members were actually appointed yesterday. That's a, that's a specific committee that does not necessarily need to be made up of Ways and Means or Appropriations members. In this case, I think most of the members are, in fact, on the committee or are in leadership on the budget committees, with the one addition of Representative Stephen Johnson, who is the Tax Committee Chair. Only one local area representative, I should say two, on the budget committee. One is Aaron Davis, who's the Vice Chair of Appropriations, and Kathy Wolf-Moore, representative from Wyandotte County, as the ranking member on the committee. So, again, we will have seven days where legislators will be taking a look at the monthly receipts. They will begin the budget planning process for 2018, and you can bet that they're gonna take into account the tax policy changes that occurred and looking at a number of the unmet needs across the state. Today, on my way over here, the governor issued a release where he's requesting salary increases for certain prison guards. It's not across the board, but there are a number of items like that throughout the state budget that are either underfunded or have been ignored for a number of years. And so, we're gonna see those, those needs begin to rise to the top as money starts to come into the state's coffers. Another interesting thing, and I'll talk about this a little bit later as it relates to the Board of Regents budget, but there, we're going to have an active year there, too. One of the, one of the requests that the board is going to make is to restore the cuts that have been made over the past couple of years, and that's three to four percent, depending on the area of higher education that was impacted. The fun thing that's going on, and we'll be watching CAPERS as well. CAPERS will meet for one day. It's not a, not a lot of meetings, but they'll take a look at what happened, the adjustments that they made during the session this year, and recommend any additional adjustments for the legislative session in 2018. The fun thing that's going on right now is watching people announce that their intentions to run for governor, and just the movement in that, that office in general is providing a little bit of excitement in Topeka, if you want to call it that. Right now, we have potentially eight Republicans that will be on the ballot for the primary. I think there'll be some other names that get added to the list before it's all said and done. There's some interesting names. There's people that you've heard of, there's people that you've never heard of that live right here. I would encourage you to take a look at the list of folks, and I've listed them in my, my report, to see who all is running. There's going to be an announcement this weekend where I think we'll tap up to five Democrats running for that position. And, and so, again, there's some fairly high-profile names on that list, some names that you've never heard of, and a high school kid. So, it's going to be an interesting election season. That doesn't even take into account the independents that will sign up, and we're seeing some national press on, on that specifically as it relates to one of the candidates here in Kansas. So, the race for governor is going to ramp up in earnest as fall approaches, and certainly will be going full throttle next year. And that includes who we anticipate will be the incumbent governor, Lieutenant Governor Collier, as he prepares to make that transition into the role of governor. The people who do what I do for higher education get together annually for a meeting of the minds. It's a meeting that could probably take place in about 20 minutes, but we stretch it over a day. And they are working on a coordinated message for all of higher education. I think this is a goal that we talk about every year, but there seems to be a strong push from board leadership, that there be a single message on behalf of higher education, even though each, each institution, each sector has a different target audience potentially. There is going to be a coordinated effort on message. I do think it will probably be coordinated around the budget. And as I mentioned, the Board of Regents just met for their annual retreat last week, and they are going to be seeking restoration of the cuts that were made to higher education across the board. That would include CTE dollars, as well as block grants for, that we, that we get a portion of for community colleges, and then the direct appropriations that go to the state universities. The, the other thing that the System Council of Government Relations Officers helps coordinate or participates in, either way you want to look at it, is a all, across-the-board Higher Education Day. Last year was our first attempt or effort at that, try coordinating 19 community colleges on one floor of the Capitol, six state universities with all of the apparatus that they bring, and six technical colleges, and then Washburn. We will be doing that again. I'm not sure that the date has been set. I know that we're, we're looking at reserving spaces in the Capitol and determining what date looks best. It's typically around a Regents meeting, if possible, but as soon as I have the date, I'll certainly let you know. We were represented last year, both by Kate Allen, and Dr. Sobchak was, was in town as well, and we'll have a table at that event again. In fact, we had, what's the Cavalier's name?
Jean-Claude.
Jean-Claude.
Jean-Claude was, was present, one of the few, one of the few community college mascots that was, that was there. And so, we'll be asking Jean-Claude to trek over to Topeka again. The other thing that we do as government relations officers on behalf of higher education is coordinate a breakfast for legislators on Wednesday mornings, and the community colleges have been a, a part of that over the past year. I think the breakfasts themselves were started by the Regents institutions a couple of years ago, and were expanded to the, to the entire system last year. And so, that's, that's a nice event where a number of folks stop by in their morning on their way to caucus, as they walk in the building, as they're running to their offices, they're running to committee, and it's proved to, to make space for some valuable conversations, even if just for a moment. And that's, again, kind of what it's all about, is that five seconds that you need to talk to somebody in Topeka. Finally, the, the one last piece that I want to mention is I was in Washington DC late this summer on, on different business, but I was at the US Chamber, and one of the things that came up during a workforce development conversation was the expansion of Pell Grants. And there is an effort afoot, a bipartisan effort, to expand Pell Grants to certificate programs. It makes complete sense when you, when you look at it. It certainly would open the doors for, for people here at our institution and community colleges and technical colleges, and, and state universities, for that matter, that also have certificate programs. I doubt that it will happen in the calendar year 2018, but it will be included as part of the Higher Ed Reauthorization Act that begins being discussed soon. And I've included an article that talks about some of the challenges and some of the reasons why it makes sense in, in the report that, that I sent to you. So, I think that pretty much covers the things that have been happening this summer. It has been quiet, but we are looking now that the interim committees have been appointed for some activity later on this fall.
Thank you, Dick. Questions? Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carter, what groups are in that lobbyist group of higher ed that are, are meeting to have a coordinated message? Who's in that group?
So, it would be the lobbyists employed by the Community College Association, the Technical College Association, the individual university liaisons that represent each state university, the Washburn University employs a lobbyist, would include myself, and then Matt Casey at the, at the board office.
And you've met once, you say, so far, or you are meeting?
That group meets monthly during the non-session times. In fact, there was a conference call just yesterday afternoon to catch up on a few items from the Board of Regents Retreat. They meet weekly during the, during the legislative session.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dick, will the CAPERS pension the benefits committee when it meets? I haven't heard an update or seen anything in the paper about how our bond issue is doing that we took a flying risk on a couple of years ago. Will that be part of the analysis, that, as to whether it's-
Yeah, I'm assuming that they will get a report from Alan Conroy on what the, what the investments look like, and I've not heard anything recently either.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I think on the first page of your report, you state that it'll be some time before Kansas returns to financial, from financial ground. When do you think in your estimation that would be?
I'm not even gonna hazard a guess. The thing to remember is that programs have been, in some cases severely underfunded for a number of years. Some programs have been cut back far enough that they're barely surviving. That is, my comments were also not meant to be punitive to the decision-makers in Topeka, because I don't think, when you look overall at higher education, we've done fairly well here at Johnson County Community College. We also have the ability to manage the budget here, unlike some of the state institutions. But I think it's going to be a number of years. You can talk about underfunding, you can talk about flat funding, but if you're not keeping pace with the growth of the cost of doing business, you're still behind. So, it's hard, I can't put a, a calendar year figure-
But just because we undid the tax experiment, or we've made progress with respect to legislation and policy and the budget, I mean, literally, receipts not rolling in yet.
Correct. Took us five years to get to where we are right now. I think it will take longer than five to, to get back on stable footing.
Thank you.
Dr. Sobchak?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Dick.
Yes.
Enjoy your summer. Our next item is the opportunity, once a year, to have a public hearing for the establishment of our, our fiscal budget for fiscal year 2018, which is July 1 of 2017 through June 30th of 2018. I was gonna ask Dr. Larson to just give a quick summary of where we are on the budget. I might make a few comments and open it for public hearing. We will actually discuss and adopt a budget during the management committee report. Dr. Larson?
Thank you, Chair Musil. This is, as always, a, seems like a fairly lengthy process, and that length allows for a great deal of participation and discussion and analysis among our faculty and staff, and of course, with the board. We have over 120 budget administrators on campus that contribute to all of the recommendations that come before you. We have the budget workshop in April each year for you to ask us questions. I'm really proud of how transparent we are here at the institution, where we then publish a budget that is put on our website for our faculty, staff, and community members to review. We are presenting to you a balanced budget, a general fund budget of $150 million roughly, and an all-funds, funds budget of $268 million. As you're aware, we are preparing the campus for a major investment in our facilities and are taking really final steps to issue $50 million in bonds to address our facility's master plan, and we are able to do that with no tuition increase and no increase in our mill levy. So, again, I'm very proud of all the work that's gone into this, and certainly can answer any additional questions that you have.
With that, I will open the public hearing. If anybody wants to visit, make any comments or ask any questions about the 2017-2018 budget for your community college, please step forward to the podium. If anybody would like to speak, please step forward. I'll tell those watching on, on the TV feed, this is not unusual. I take it as a, not necessarily a bad sign. I think it's a sign that we are transparent for the 12 months out of the year that we're preparing this budget, and therefore, folks are pretty comfortable that this administration and the campus as a whole, and this board are being careful with tax dollars and expending them in a way that's, that's positive. But since no one has stepped forward, I will close the public hearing, and we'll discuss this more, Dr. Cook, when you make the management committee report. Ready for committee reports? The first one is the Audit Committee. I chair the Audit Committee. We met last week, August 10th. Trustee Ingram attended the meeting along with me, and we had a number of reports, including a report from a consultant we'd hired called Barry Dunn. They were from Washington DC area? No.
They're from Maine, actually.
Maine, okay. And they were, they audited our privileged identity access management, who gets to know what and get into what systems at what time and for what purpose. Very important to lots of functions on campus, both financial and student privacy and grades and everything else. We reviewed the biannual travel and expense review. Twice a year, the Audit and Investigative Services Department reviews all trustee and all cabinet-level expenditures for travel and random samples around, around the campus, and those all were met college guidelines. We learned about other projects that are in process or upcoming audits, including an audit of warehouse receiving and a review of the student identity management. We had a follow-up report on previous audits, and there was recommendations. We had a quarterly report on the ethics hotline reports, which is our ability to report anything you see that you don't think is proper, either anonymously or by giving your name, and also the Johnson County Community College Behavioral Intervention Team and our Keep Our People Safe Team, the COPS Watch Team. We also reviewed the 2017-2018 working agenda for the Audit Committee, which had no changes from prior years, other than the school year. The only action item is the recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees approved. The fiscal year 2017-2018 Audit Committee working agenda is shown subsequently in the board packet, and I would so move.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the Audit Committee report. I see Janelle. Janelle's way in the back, okay. If you have any real questions, Janelle's here.[1426.33][1426.33](Laughter). If not, we're ready for the Human Resources Committee report. Trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Resources Committee met on Monday, August 7th. Ms. Sintliver reviewed the compensation policy for 1-8.04, the Johnson County Community College philosophy of compensation, the salaries table for faculty positions, and pay grades ranges for salaried and hourly positions. Per the compensation policy, the annual staffing authorization tables for fiscal year 17 and 18 will be included in, are included in this month's board packet. Ms. Chandler provided an update on the fiscal year 17-18 mandatory training. There will be three mandatory training components this year, including discrimination and harassment prevention in higher education, information security and campus safety awareness, and Alice training. Current employees are required to complete the training each fiscal year, and new employees must complete it within 90 days of hire. Mr. Zimmerman updated the Human Resources Committee on the progress and timeline on the transition of the administration of the college's 403B and 457B plans, with the targeted implementation date of November 1st of this year. Pursuant to the change, a new investment consultant has been hired, a sole record keeper contract has been awarded, and a new investment lineup has been created. The changes will result in significant savings to participants. In January 2017, the Human Resources Department began conducting stay interviews with employees at approximately their six-month service date. Ms. Chandler reviewed the results of exit and stay interviews for the second quarter of 2017 for the committee. Ms. Sintliver reviewed the proposed Human Resources Committee working agenda for 27-2018. The recommendation for the new working agenda is being brought forward this evening, and in the form of a recommendation. I would do that at this time with your approval.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, it is the recommendation, the Human Resources Committee, that the Board of Trustees adopt the Human Resources Committee working agenda for 2017-2018, as shown subsequently in the board packet.
Chair, second?
Second.
Second.
It moved to second to adopt the Human Resources Committee working agenda for the 17-18 school year. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
The one thing that I would add in addition to that is that HR has been meeting kind of on an every-other-month basis, and we will begin to meet on a, on a monthly basis. So, I think that's a nice change, and you'll see monthly reports for us. So, our next meeting is scheduled September 5th of this year.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Learning Quality Committee, Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met on August 7th, 2017, here in this room. Myself, Trustee Sandate, and Trustee Ingram were actually present, along with Dr. Gurb Singh. Jim Lane, Dean of Arts and Design, Humanities and Social Sciences, gave a PowerPoint presentation highlighting the program areas in his division, as well as discussing the future goals of the division since acquiring the new program areas during the reorganization of the divisions. Jay Ansel, Professor, Executive Director of our Sustainability Program, gave a PowerPoint presentation highlighting the sustainability program and the different areas impacted throughout the college, as well as the future operational goals of the program. Dr. Gurb Singh also made a presentation regarding the renewal of an affiliation agreement with Prime Healthcare Services of Kansas City LLC, which does business as a little-known hospital called St. Joseph Medical Center, and the facility has changed names, and the previous agreement was listed under Corondelet Health. A clinical experience will be provided for students enrolled in the EMS, health occupations, nursing, practical nursing, respiratory care, and pharmacy technical programs, and the agreement was approved by the committee. Complete details can be found subsequently in the consent agenda portion of the August 17 board packet. Kathy Almay Marin, I hope I said that remotely correct.
Marin.
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 Program Director of Career Transfer Services presented a reverse transfer MOU agreement that we have with the curators of the University of Missouri on behalf of the University of Missouri-Kansas City and our college. The MOU creates a pathway for the students in the AS programs to meet all of UMKC's general education requirements, and the agreement was approved by the committee. Complete details can be found subsequently in the consent agenda portion of the August 17 board packet. And as a graduate of both the Kansas Board of Regents and the University of Missouri-Kansas City, I'm particularly proud of this, and proud of our staff and administration for moving toward this because of what I think has been the mindset of the legislature the last five years, that we've worked toward a market-based management philosophy, for better or for worse. So, I'm particularly proud of that MOU. Learning Quality Committee has also reviewed and recommended the updates to the enrollment policy 311.01. The proposed updates add new sections related to continuing education course enrollment, including information about payment and exceptions to continuing education course enrollment. The purpose of the updates is to clarify differences between credit and continuing education enrollment process, and it is the recommendation, Mr. Chair, of Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the enrollment policy 311.01, as shown subsequently in the board packet. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
It moved to second to accept the recommendation and to the amendments to the enrollment policy 311.01. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, it is also the recommendation of Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration. of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the International Student Admission Policy 310.03 as shown subsequently in the board packet. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
You can't move a second.
Nobody said anything.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and seconded that we adopt the proposed amendments to the International Student Admission Policy 310.03. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Sharp.
I have a quick question about an example of this. When I read this, my first, my gut reaction was, this sounds like something that could get us in legal trouble because it sounds subjective, where a written waiver would be granted in the sole discretion of the, is there, I assume that, Tanya, you're okay with that language? And do we have an example without giving away any student information, obviously, where that could happen?
If I may, the reason this was put into place is, as the policy was prior, a student was required to get insurance. And students can come over on visa and they go on internship, and our prior policy required that they be enrolled beyond insurance. So if we're caught in catch 22, they're on an internship, they weren't enrolled, therefore they weren't eligible for it. And so what this says is, in circumstances like that, where they're not eligible, or a few, where they may come over from a participating country that were provided or something, which is rare, that we do have processes in place that would not require them to be on. And those would be the examples, either they're not eligible for our insurance given the participating program on the visa, or they have it otherwise, that we have an app to allow for them to not have to get insurance. And that's, that's what the policy describes, is who's able to make that decision. Otherwise, they don't have the model of policy with the insurance.
And our office has looked at it, and we've also confirmed that internally within that department, that operating procedures are consistent and followed, even if there's a lot of.
Okay. Thank you. I figured there was an example and a further explanation, since I wasn't at the meeting. But I appreciate that explanation. Thanks.
Good question. Any further questions? If not all in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I'll point out to members of the board and anybody paying attention that on page 12 of the board packet is the Learning Quality Working Agenda. It's been my pleasure for the last four years to sit on this committee and then to chair it the last two. I really do feel it's where the rubber meets the road with respect to monitoring the learning engagement process and monitoring outcomes throughout the college. So I want to point that out, that the working agenda is there, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Management Committee, Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The management committee met on 8:00 AM on Wednesday, August 2nd, here in the boardroom. Information of that management committee meeting is on pages 13 through 39 of your board packet. Before I get to the recommendations, there were a number of reports. The first was from Alyssa Waldman of the Director of Small Business Center. And I would suggest that if you're interested in seeing the detail of that report, to let Yvonne know, and perhaps she can get a report from Alyssa on that. Members of the management committee received it. And it's very interesting, because I think we all consider that the Small Business Development Center is a foundational pillar of the college when it comes to job creation and training students in a variety of areas. And in this particular case, last year, the center worked with 513 clients. And the report is very detailed about the economic impact that those small business owners created for the county and the area, job creation. And I would just encourage you to dig into that a little bit, because it really is positive news about the good work that the Small Business Development Center does in assisting businesses in Johnson County and the area for growing, starting, improving, surviving, et cetera, et cetera. And it was interesting to me that we're one of the few in the state of Kansas, from a community college standpoint, and particularly the influence we have, not just in Johnson County, but in the Kansas City metropolitan area of the county. So I would encourage you to take a look at that. Rachel Lear's Associate Vice President of Financial Services provided the semi-annual review of budget reallocations. That whole context is found on pages 15 to 20 of your board packet. And we line, Rachel lines out in detail where those reallocations were made and for what purposes, what categories of the budget. The end result is, and we do this, to remind you, twice a year, and as we prepare a budget within departments sometimes, and from department-to-department reallocations are needed for a variety of reasons, and we try to list those. The end result is it's zero impact on the budget, and it's just one of those management processes we go through. She also reported on the $50 million in debt that was referenced earlier by Dr. Larson on our facilities management project. She is working with Piper Jaffray and Gilmer Bell, bond counsel on preparing the issuance. I would remind the board that the date of those bonds is scheduled, the sale for the date of those bonds is scheduled for Thursday, September 21st, the date of our September board meeting, with a final closing date on October 1st. Mitch Borchers, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the sole service report. Again, those are items, purchases, from $25,000 to $100,000, and that detailed report is found on pages 22 and 23 of your board packet. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facilities, gave his monthly update on the capital infrastructure projects. That report is found on pages 35 through 36. Tom Pagano, Vice President for Information Services and CIO, provided a quarterly update on the activities on information services. And again, this is a, this is an area, this is a report that, I don't want to say it's behind the scenes that makes the college go, because it's really front of the engine that, when we talk about data collection, data sharing, information, it's really a big deal. And I want to thank the board for the investments we've made in the technology, information services over the past few years. I would encourage you to visit with Mr. Pagano if you have more questions about that. But the work we're doing in information services is a lot of work, and I guess in my opinion, oftentimes maybe doesn't get the recognition it deserves to make the engine go smoothly as it does across our campus. So I wanted to thank Tom for that report. In terms of recommendations, earlier, we held the public hearing. And as a result of that input and the work that Dr. Larson suggested over a year's time, I want to thank the board for all of the work you've put into it, starting with the outline of the budget planning process back in December of '16, and the workshop we held in April that Dr. Larson referred to, and the adoption of the management budget that this board approved in May, so that we could begin to order things for this coming year. So unless you're interested in me going through the detail of Dr. Larson's report and the report of the management committee, by the way, the detail of that budget outline is found on pages 13 and 14 of your board packet. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the fiscal year 2017-18 budget as published, which includes total property tax levied of $93,678,447 for 2018, compared to $87,434,656 in 2017, and does hereby certify said budget to the County Clerk of Johnson County, Kansas, for collection in the manner prescribed by law, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anybody want to make any comments about the budget or the process?
I think, I think, Mr. Chair, again, to reinforce what Dr. Larson has said, to be able to approve a budget with a flat mill levy, with no tuition increase, and to be able to do the things that we do, I know that you're going to hear a treasures report later in the, in the board meeting. But I would just like to commend the administrative team and the 100-plus budget developers that you referred to, Dr. Larson, and the input from faculty and staff to build a budget. And, Mr. Chair, you referenced earlier in your comments about the confidence that the community has with these decisions and the decision-making process. I guess I've always been driven by the process. And if the process works, we'll usually come out with the good solution, the better solution. So I just want to commend all of the work that goes into this. Sometimes, when the public is viewing an action like tonight, they say, wow, they kind of breeze through that rather quickly. But this has been a work in progress for over a year. Actually, when we look at a five-year projection, we began to think about a budget five years from now. So I wanted to make that commendation, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Lindstrom.
I'll just echo the comments that Trustee Cook has mentioned, but I would like to, in addition, emphasize Dr. Sobchak and Dr. Larson and their staff doing a remarkable job.
Trustee Cross.
I share in sentiment of Dr. Cook, Trustee Dr. Cook, and Trustee Lindstrom. I do think it's been, it's been a rather difficult four years, and I wouldn't be myself if I didn't offer some criticism, not of the administration, not even necessarily of this board, but to speak about the realities of the funding of higher education and in the community college movement, specifically that we've had to cut a number of sports, I think, over the last several years, golf, tennis, and I believe the track program in the year to come, and that certain budgetary decisions made at all levels of government have an impact on what we do here. And while I have complete confidence that this board and administration has done its level best with what's been handed to it, I did want to point out that while policies have changed, much work remains, and that we must continue on the path that we're on to, I think, maintain the confidence that we have in the community. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? I'm going to make some comments, because I think it's important, especially for those watching. I think everybody in this room has sat through what we've been doing for the last 11 months, since we approved our last budget in August of 2016. But Barbara held this up, and I think it's important to show the budget book that is available to any citizen that wants it, that is read by few, appreciated by even fewer, maybe. But the first two pages are simply the guideline. These are what we told staff to do last December. Then there are updated guidelines. Then there's a calendar of everything that happens and every step we went through that is two pages, leading to today, actually, probably going into November, when the actual mill levy is set based on the county appraisers' numbers. This budget process is detailed far more than this. This is a summary process. Government today, and we have been singled out by some naysayers and nitpickers who selectively cherry pick information about salaries of individuals on campus, or maybe expenditures on campus, but they never show up and talk to us at a budget hearing. They don't go through the budget. They don't understand the pressures that come from state funding and federal funding, state mandates, federal mandates, that we try to live with. They will criticize us for not rolling back the mill levy in a year when the assessed value went up 7%. And we discussed this at length at two meetings, during the budget process workshop in April and the management budget in May. We are embarking on a $102 million facility improvement plan, for which we're going to have to borrow money. We can borrow money and pay it back, or we can use the increased monies that we get from increased assessed valuation and not borrow as much. And we chose not to borrow as much. I think that's a smart, prudent, and conservative way to go about budgeting. We also decided to give students a break after year, year after year after year of tuition increase. We may be criticized for that, because students aren't paying their fair share. I don't mind people making different judgments, as long as they base it on all the same information that we have and that we've looked at over the last year. But I'm, I'm very comfortable with this budget. I'm very pleased with the way this board works together, not with some different priorities sometimes, but to get to a budget that works for Johnson County citizens. I'll note that the average Johnson County home resident in Johnson County will pay $21 more a year because of the assessed evaluation increase. For that, they're going to help ensure that we have an updated relevant campus, both in new buildings and renovation of existing buildings. They're going to ensure that we have students that find higher education more affordable than they would otherwise, and I think those are very good trade-offs. So I'm pleased with the way this budget turned out.
Mr. Chair, one final comment. You reminded me of comments that Dr. Sobchak made at the welcome back of faculty and staff on Wednesday morning, when you talk about the regulations and the guidelines we have to work under. Dr. Sobchak reminded us that we have 34 federal regulations that this college works under. And while maybe not all of them have a financial figure attached to it, many of them do. And so in a lot of cases, as we adopt a budget, we have those regulations to follow as well.
If there are no further comments, all in favor of adopting the budget as presented, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. That motion carries unanimously.
Next recommendation was for the transfer of funds from the college to the foundation. The Sustainability Committee has requested that $6,000 of the recycling proceeds be transferred to the JCC Foundation for Scholarships. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees authorize the transfer of $6,000 from the Sustainability Initiatives Fund to the JCC Foundation to be used for student scholarships, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
A comment, Mr. Chair, while we consider the vote, I would like to remind the board and the public that since 2012, this totals over $65,000, that the sustainability program, through recycling efforts, has contributed to the scholarship foundation, and it's to be commended.
Any discussion? Not all in favor of the transfer, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
There were three recommendations based on requests for proposals to monitor business services. The first is a renewal of the annual contract for the athletic team charter bus. Those bids are found on page 24. We did submit five proposals out. Three bids were submitted. And I will make, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract with crossroad tours for regular season athletic team charter bus service in the amount of $76,428. Postseason athletic team charter bus service on as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $80,915, and an additional $15,735 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $173,077 for athletic team charter bus services, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the renewal of the contract with crossroad tours for athletic team charter bus services. Any discussion? Trustee Lindstrom.
I just have a question. Trustee Cook, does that include the foreseen national championships that we will be competing in?
Well, I will say that when one looks at that number and you see the postseason number of 80,000 compared to the regular season of 76, postseason travel does require greater distances, perhaps. And the result of success that this college has had in athletics nationally is planning for that to occur. So the answer would be yes.
Thank you.
That was Dr. Cook's way of getting to yes. Trustee Cross.
This is like John Kerry. So they bust a great injunction, like when the baseball team makes it to the College World Series?
They bust.
We don't charter a plane?
If you wish.
No.
We have flown, like volleyball is a phoenix now, the national championship rotate across the country. Sometimes it makes better sense, a lot of them for classes miss. And so it's like, so we always prize flights against us. The past two years in Phoenix, the volleyball team has flown because it's been cheap, almost as cheap, and it misses a lot.
Thank you.
Further discussion or questions? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next is the RFP for the renewal of the annual contract for network infrastructure equipment and services. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for network infrastructure equipment and services with CDW Government LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,156,200, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation and renew the contract with CDW Government LLC. Any discussion or questions? If not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Our final recommendation is a renewal of the annual contract for multi-function devices and optional managed print services. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract with unisource document products for multi-function devices and managed print services in an amount not to exceed $135,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the renewal of the annual contract with unisource document products. Any questions or discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Those no, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That does conclude my report, but while I have the microphone, these next three challenges I have for us were not necessarily a result of the Management Committee, but we do talk about these items as a part of the management process. You have received, from Dr. Sobchak, material regarding the Higher Learning Commission. And I guess my challenge to us is if we want to become better advocates of the college, that report, and Dr. Sobchak will be talking about that maybe later tonight, but certainly at our board retreat, I would challenge all of us to read that report prior to the board retreat. It is full of valuable information about your college. And so, brief yourself with that. Terrific material. Thank you very much. The second piece is the Academic Support Division that was sent out by Dean Miller. When we talk about why are students successful at Johnson County Community College, that report will give you the answer, because it gives you the detail of the context of all of our labs. We talk about one-to-one opportunities for students, for mentoring, and having chance to be with faculty members in those labs. It talks about our student support system, and I again want to thank you. That, I think, is about 33-page report, but if you want to become a better advocate of this college, understanding what happens every day, brief yourself on those two reports. And the third one would be what I think Dr. Sobchak might speak on, but if not, it's in his president's report. We had a report in detail about that last month, and it's the Student Advocate Activity Tracking work of how our student advocacy program is working. And again, gives us details in about seven different areas of how we reach out to help students. So, that's my challenge to each of you tonight, is we become better advocates of this campus. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. We'll move on now to the president's recommendations for action, and start with the treasurer's report. Treasurer Cross.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board packet contains the preliminary unaudited treasurer's report for the fiscal year ended in June, on June 30th, 2017. This preliminary report does not include all of the college's fiscal year-end adjustments, however. Some items of note include, at page one of the treasurer's report is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. Fiscal 2017 general fund revenues were approximately $5 million higher than in fiscal 2016, primarily due to the increase in the ad valorem property tax revenues resulting from increases in assessed evaluation, assessed valuation throughout the county. The general PTE funds expenses for fiscal 2017 were approximately $130 million compared to the $129.9 million for fiscal 2016, which is an increase of about .3 percent. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of June 30th, 2017, in all funds, was $109.4 million, which is approximately $12.7 million higher than at the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits, and therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the college's administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended June 30th, 2017, subject to audit.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the treasurer's report, subject to audit. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Monthly report, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Musso. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for their approval of the budget. I know it's been a year-long process, a lot of work has gone into it, but I also have to share that your compliments to the administration, while very, well, believe me, well-accepted, the work that we've been able to do and the fiscal success that we have is based on the work of everybody on campus. I mean, it's a campus-wide effort, and therefore, your compliments should be extended to everybody on our campus, for what we've been able to accomplish. So, thank you. For those of you who were at the session yesterday, you may recall I spoke a little bit about my parents. They have moved from Missouri to Kansas, and they have found our cable channel. They have become avid followers of these trustee meetings, and so I just want to say, hi, Mom, hi, Dad, wake up. Joey's going to talk, so thank you very much.
They're totally watching.
I thought you liked that one. Okay.
Isn't Joey Kangaroo in Australia?
Thanks, Dave.
UMKC mascot.
You know, we are going to have a lightning round tonight, which will be far more substantive than what I've been able to provide so far, but to get it started, we're going to talk about the in-service, and it's been, I think, a very successful one. And Karen, Karen, of course, is our VP of Continuing Ed and also Organizational Development, and is the overseer of all of our in-service activities.
Did you share with your parents you got your 25-year service award?
No, but thank you. Glad to know.
We're very proud of him. He wore all his pins, so, there you go. No, it's been a really good week, and thank you. I've seen a number of you at various events. We programmed over 120 sessions over the past week. We won't end those until Saturday at noon, when we end the adjunct session that we will be doing. And just for reference, those are all done by our faculty and staff in presenting in those sessions, and some of those are multiple things going on, like the poster session, the faculty symposium, and then the adjunct sessions that we will do on Saturday. We had a full house at the faculty meeting. That room, we do an estimated count, we know we had at least 350 in there, so it was a packed house. Mickey's changed that format, and it's a great meeting. Great job, Mickey. Our all-staff meeting, we had over 500 people at that meeting this week as well, too, and then we had that broadcast out to our off-site locations, which was well-received, because, you know, people are busy and they can't always get to that meeting. So, that was a wonderful opportunity for us. The Better Together Breakfast, we had over 1,000 people attend that. We had probably the, I mean, all the Wall of Honor ceremonies are wonderful, but it was, there wasn't a dry eye at that ceremony this past week. It was incredible. We estimate people coming in and out, coming early, and at the end to network, that we had around 200 people drop in. And we had, especially Nancy, had students for years that stopped in to surprise her when she received her award, so it was very touching. And service pins, as I mentioned, we did those today. We gave over 250 of those out. So, those are really kind of the highlights for the week. I hope you noticed, I do want to, you know, we can't do this alone. I only have a staff of four, five people in staff development, so it takes people like Chris's team and Molly, who worked with us on the all-staff meeting, all the people in the theater, marketing people who help us push that information out, the catering staff, the people that set the rooms up. I mean, every time we have a change, there's a ripple of about four or five departments. So, I'd like to publicly acknowledge all those people for all their help, and especially ed tech, who helped us with our new calendar this year. So, if you saw that, that was in a new format to make it easier for everyone to access, and we've, we want to make that accessible, especially to our adjuncts, so they didn't have to go through InfoShare. They could pull that up, do an at-a-glance, and also see all the full descriptions. So, thank you for that team that worked with us as well. Any questions on the week?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Karen, I'm not sure how you acquired the speaker, Captain Mike, but he made several comments that I thought that really at least resonated with me. And before I speak to the highlight of one, Mr. Chair, I want to compliment you for your opening remarks and your address of the Charlottesville situation. Dr. Sobchak, you reinforced that. And while we appear to be living at a time when hate and divisiveness is receiving lots of national attention daily, I really thought Captain Mike's comment about, rather than talking about diversity, let's talk about unity, and the examples he gave on his ship and the disciplinary numbers that went to zero, it made a lot of sense to me. And in fact, I mentioned to Henry before the meeting started that at ACCT, we have six values of operating values, and one of them is diversity, and we have a diversity committee, and I will make a call tomorrow morning to our president of ACCT to say, Bakari, I would recommend that we change the name of our diversity committee to the unity committee. I thought he made a lot of sense, Karen. I want to compliment you for that. I want to compliment you for the whole week's activities. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Molly Baumgartner and Chris played a huge role in that, bringing that speaker in, so he did a wonderful job.
It was Commander Mike Abrhoff.
Yes.
His one book was This Is Your Ship.
This Is Your Ship.
He has another, another book on leadership, and his presentation was excellent. I likened it to speaking to a bar association meeting and trying to inspire leadership. There's a lot of skeptics out there, and I think there are some of those of us on a higher education campus, too, that think we don't need to be inspired or shown how to lead. He did a good job, and I think he was well-received by the entire audience. It was an excellent choice. Whoever found him and brought him here, it was very, it was inspiring, and I learned from it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks.
The president's report has some great, as usual, all kinds of great stories in there and information about the college. I want to share a couple of those with you. This is, this is one of the things that was featured, and it demonstrates how our professors, our faculty, and students interact, obviously with one another, but also with the local business community and the potential internship opportunities that could come of that. This is within our Computer Science Information Technology Department. And in July, this past July, Professor Jim Hopper and Professor Carol Smith accompanied two students, Ben Carpenter and Cooper Mauring, to the Black and Beach Internal Technology Innovation Competition Presentations. This is an in-house competition that they have among a variety of teams at Black and Beach, and they were there working with one of the Black and Beach teams. They do this every year, and it's kind of, it's incentive for them to do things out of the box, to think innovatively and what kind of projects they can do. I also, as I'm talking about Black and Beach, want to recognize Clint and Britton Robinson, who will be chairing some enchanted evening this year, which is, of course, our scholarship fundraiser. So, there are five Black and Beach teams, and they present to about 150 Black and Beach employees, presumably all engineers, and our group is there to support a project called Cultivate Fresh. And this was inspired, this was inspired by our students, Ben and Cooper's work on the JCCC Personal Food Computer. So, now something that's happening here is inspiring people at Black and Beach. There were five projects presented, and in the end, Cultivate Fresh won. That's our group. They will now go on to the Black and Beach Board of Directors for their additional consideration. That's really, that's a real cool thing. Ben and Cooper had the chance, and this is what's really fantastic, Ben and Cooper had the chance to discuss with Black and Beach employees just exactly how one of the top engineering firms in the world works, and also potential internship opportunities. So, hats off to our professors Hopper and Smith, and also to Professor Lisa Frederickson, who had worked on this project and mentored it for over a year. So, it's an outstanding example of how people can collaborate here for the benefit of our students. Today, I received a newsletter from the same department, and this newsletter was by an outside organization called the HIMSS. This is a health information systems-type organization, and this was kind of interesting as well, because there was a special feature in there, and it talks about, meet our newest HIMSS-approved education partner. The Kansas City metro has become a Mecca for big healthcare and technology names, and in the center of it all is Johnson County Community College. With health information technology needs on the rise, Johnson County Community College offers a competitive online and flexible-in-the-classroom health information systems program. Our certification and associate degree programs utilize the latest cutting-edge technologies, including hands-on EHR experience on a widely utilized platform, to train students in meeting the demanding workforce need. Students in the health information systems program at Johnson County Community College learn the crucial computer systems that medical professionals use to run their businesses. Lori Brooks, department chair of the HIS program at JCCC, said, "This recognition as the HIMSS," sorry about all these acronyms, I know, you're just, it's tough.
You explained it.
"approved education partner validates everything we do at Johnson County Community College to prepare our students for employment and growth in the health IT industry. It also sets the bar high for continued growth of our program." And there's a little click to Johnson County Community College, specifically to those HIS programs. That's really neat to see, this program that we have out there in the specific industry and highlighted as one of the top. This was another story in there, and this is about financial services in our Bursar operations. Financial aid operation, our financial aid operation has reduced, has reduced our loans awarded to students from a high of $34 million in fiscal year 2012 to less than $11 million for fiscal 2017. This is the lowest amount of loans awarded here since fiscal year 2004. Apparently, they changed some project in 20, or some process in 2013. I'd like to ask Dr. Weber to elaborate a little bit more on that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. An opportunity to write about our financial aid department. What happened when we went electronic, we offered students all the forms they're eligible for, and they just blanket accepted it. And when we realized students were taking out more loans than they, we thought they should, and we're learning about the loan debt in our country, we changed our processes in that what we did is we told students, this is your grant gave you're eligible for, you must select and choose saying you want the loan aid. So, that was the first step. And by doing that, we reduced, in the first two years, about over 50% of our loan from 33 to 16 million. From there, we also then said, unsubsidized loan, which wasn't the phase, they were still eligible for, but in order to get it, they had to come in and do personal loan advising with financial aid staff, so they understood the impact of borrowing that additional money. So, all students are still eligible for the full amount of aid that they were able to get, but they have to choose to take on that loan debt. So, it's a part of financial literacy program, and to these numbers, they did a phenomenal job there.
So, students benefit down the road by not having those massive debt, massive debt on their backs.
Absolutely.
What about, are you limiting the number of students here? I mean, does that cut back the number of students who can come here? I mean...
No, no. So, each student's aid eligibility is dependent upon their completion of the FASDA, which is a free application for federal student aid. So, that's federal money that we have to afford the board. We don't have a cap on that.
That's terrific. Thank you, Randy. Today, I heard over at the coffee that we got a request today. Recently, about $98,000, received $98,000 from a gentleman named Mr. Kenneth Pearson. He used to live in Lakeview Village. He's recently passed away, obviously. Kate Allen in the foundation office took that $98,000, and I'd like to share with you how she allocated that. $40,000 went to the Johnson County Adult Education Area. That's to help students with their GED, people who need those funds to pursue their GEDs. $18,000 went to the Foundation Board Leadership Scholarship. But this is what the highlight is. Every year, our counselors raise about $9,000 to $10,000 of their own funds through payroll deduction to go into the Counseling Center hardship grant. So, many of our students need some type of just, of some funding, just to get over the hump. It could be something that could even prevent them from coming to school here, but with a little bit of help, they can continue their studies and get through. And so, Kate allocated $40,000 to that fund as well. I think that's so, I think it's terrific, because it demonstrates how counseling was working with the foundation office, but more importantly, the fact that the counseling area was making that personal sacrifice to create that fund in the first place by using our, by our payroll deduction. So, I think that's just a wonderful, wonderful story. Okay, now we have a lightning round. Earlier, it was mentioned that Mickey had a very successful faculty meeting today. Since I was not there, because I've never been invited to one in four years, I thought it'd be interesting for the board to hear exactly what went on at the meeting. I'm kind of curious myself.
Well, to begin, that is purposeful.
Yeah, I figured.
I figured they lob enough spears at me, that's okay, you don't need any more of those. The faculty meeting today went extremely well, actually. I will say that in following up our speaker from yesterday, as I pointed out to John yesterday, I was a little upset when I walked out of the auditorium yesterday because the man stole my speech. I started last year by talking to our faculty initially about, now, he starts with, it's your ship. I suppose I should write a book called It's Your School, because we started out by talking to the faculty about the fact that faculty need to own the institution, that the most important thing that we do here is what we do in our classrooms, and that that is the purpose for which we exist. And so, I challenged the faculty to step up, talk to me about what they want to see happen, how they would like to grow the institution, how, the things that they think we need to do for students and with students, so that I can help them create the college that they want to work at and that students want to be at. And so, as we started to work through that today, I laid out for them some information about our new strategic plan that we've been working on, which you will without doubt be hearing all about during the retreat, but we have a particular place within this -- strategic plan for academic excellence, which is the first for this institution to segregate that out and specifically focus on it. And a big piece of that is course level success, because all of the rest of the metrics by which we are judged start with how successful students are. And one of the things that faculty can and do own is that day-to-day success in a class. We cannot make a student, you know, decide to stop working and be a full-time student so they can finish sooner. They have families to take care of. We cannot make a student decide to, you know, give up a couple of extra hours at work so that they can have that time to study. What we can do is make sure that a student has access to the best, most current, and most helpful both technology and people that we can put in front of them. We can offer them great assistance and our learning resource centers. We can streamline the way that we handle our classes, provide supplemental instruction for students who are having a hard time with concepts. All of the things that make us great are a part of what we can do for and with our students, to make them better human beings, and to help them become what they would like to be with the life that they bring to us. And so we spent a great deal of time in that meeting today, actually, in a question-and-answer period, where I actually asked the question, "What would you like for us to try to do to build better resources for our students?" And I let the faculty throw out to me suggestions for things that we can do to shore up some shortcomings, because our ultimate goal with this is to begin with our most needy students, those folks who are testing into our developmental classes, because that is the underpinning and foundation of being able to take our students where we meet them, which is a huge part of what the community college is. And we want to raise everybody to that level of status that they are, not only a college graduate, but they are a scholar and a college student, not just someone who passes through these doors, but somebody who leaves with something worthwhile and powerful between their ears and in their heart when they walk out these doors. So we talked a lot about how we can build that through providing better supplemental instruction and better assistance for students in developmental, in the hopes that we can raise our developmental success rates to and above 80%, because at the course level, that's where the faculty has their most powerful interactions, when they see those students every day who need what they have to offer. And so that was a big part of the conversation that we had today for an hour and a half in that faculty meeting.
Any questions?
Well, I would just make the comment, I, we had a conversation yesterday at lunch about this very thing, and the positiveness that we felt that you all were a part of yesterday with that speaker, thank you, just resonated with us. And I think, at least as Dr. Cook and I spoke yesterday at lunch, it was like, "We need to continue this," you know? And so the fact that you could turn right around and do that with faculty and begin those conversations that I hope we will all continue forever, I think is extremely important. You know, it's not a quick, easy fix. I get all of that, but starting it off and kicking it off right at the beginning of the school year is just really important, and it will resonate with our students, absolutely. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod. Tom, you're next. Absolutely. Tom Pagano, he's our Vice President, Information Services. Tom?
Thank you. I just want to start out by saying, the last time I did the lightning round, I was told I had three minutes, and I did...
You still do.
I did take care of it in three minutes. However, my counterparts in the cabinet did not, so I won't mention names, John, Randy, or anything.
All of them.
So I'm just going to take a little bit longer tonight, because lightning maybe travels a little slower here in Kansas, so.
See clips, yes.
Anyways, to build on the theme about Commander Ebershof, I, the book is excellent, and I think it was very motivating to all of us. Coincidentally, one of my staff had read it already and texted this to me during the presentation, so it was incredible. And I had not read it, but the book is on its way. In fact, he'll autograph it for you if you ask it. During lunch yesterday at the wall honoree lunch, I, I had the opportunity to sit with Dr. Sobchak, trustees Ingram and Cook and Barbara, and I think that was all we had at the table. And I sat down, and we started talking about the speaker, the commander, and some of the things that he said. And at that point, Joe said, "Hey, Tom, by the way, you're going to do the lightning round tomorrow." So I realized, lightning round doesn't mean you go fast here, but you're told very quickly to do this. And so it was interesting, because it started out as, "Hey, can you go give us an update on what you're doing?" And about 30 seconds later, it turned into, "Why don't you talk a little bit about what you all are doing, and a little bit about the time you've spent here with regards to what we heard in the message from the commander?" And so I thought last night a little bit about that, and that's really one I wanted to spend maybe five or so minutes on today. So, and by all means, stop me if it gets too long.
We will.
But with the eclipse coming, you know, maybe I get an extra minute. So let me just say this. I've been in healthcare for 16, 17 years, and by the way, it's called HIMSS, H-I-M-S, Health Information Management System Society, and it's extremely fantastic organization to get that kind of designation. It's incredible. One of the things I, four things that I heard him talk about yesterday that I think are near and dear to my heart, and I've learned this through book, but probably more, more importantly, through experiential knowledge and leading large and even small numbers of folks, it doesn't matter whether it's a large worship or a small team of 20 people, it really doesn't matter, there are qualities. And in my opinion, four stand out. One is listen. That was clearly the number-one out-of-the-gate thing you need to do. When you come into an organization, I'd even say, "You have to go as far to say, to listen during the interview. You should probably be actively solving the problems during the interview, because that's the first time you listen to what's happening in an organization." And so it's all about going above and beyond. That's listening to your folks, your customers, in our case, the students, faculty, and staff. So I think that is number one. And don't stop listening, because that is a key. I have a couple of examples of these at the end when I wrap it up. Number two, communicate clearly. You hear it, you know it, there are so many ways to communicate, and you need to not just focus on the quality of that communication, but the quantity of that communication. And obviously, that goes together with number one, just listening. Number three, and very critically here, is we talk about motivating people. In my world, and perhaps in some of yours in academia, motivation isn't just having people do more thinking, because we have lots of people that are motivated and every day spend a ton of time thinking and concentrating on what their task is to do that day. We have extremely talented, and as I told you last time, very motivated and just heartfelt work here. But what we also have to do is to motivate people to not think sometimes. And what I mean by that is be mindful and innovate, because we all know by the studies and by everything we read today, that there's, innovation truly comes from within, when your mind is really not concentrating on problem-solving. And so that is one thing that I have, I think we've done a good job of here, of changing the mindset around, it's not just about getting the operations done and seeing the monthly operating report and knowing how many help desk tickets we do. It's about the direction we go, how we align with the goals, the strategy, the plan, and what the students' needs are. At the end of the day, that changes very frequently. We have learners here that are on technology platforms that have never been in school before. They have never come to college before. They're learning, and their way of learning is completely different. So we really have to pay attention to that, and that takes innovative thinking, not just problem-solving. We do a great deal, I might say, also with the third floor. They're phenomenal in terms of letting us work with them to innovate, to some of your examples, Dr. Sobchak. And then lastly, team. I mean, you can't say enough about team, but motivation is important, listening and communication is important, but team and collaboration are number one. So really, out of the gate, as I sort of reflected here when I came on board and had the benefit of an assessment that had been done around the department, and there was a few alignment areas that we had to look at and examine as leaders. We were without a CIO for quite some time, and as, as the commander said, you know, you don't want your successor or predecessor to leave and get the applause, and then, you know, when you leave, you get the tears. It was opposite here, actually. Barbara was the interim sort of CIO, and, and she had tears when she left, because she didn't really want to leave the spot. She loved it so much. So, and people didn't cry when I came on board, so I think things are okay. But let me say this, a couple of specific things, and then I'll be done. We call ourselves One IS. That was a brand that I brought to the table. The One IS has nothing to do with anything, frankly. It's what you do with it. And so some specific things, when it comes to metrics, and how do you measure how you do all the things I talked about, we formed, and most importantly, an EAG, an Employee Advisory Group. It has been by far the best employee advisory group that I have ever had in my life, and I have managed groups as large as 450 people across the country. This EAG is incredible. And we are going now into our second year, and we have always had a great supply of people who are willing to talk. So to me, that is creating the environment that you want, to allow people like the commander referred to, to come to the table, to speak up and tell you what they want, and then you listen to that. So that is huge. We have newsletters that we produce, we have a podcast that I do, we have a day with Tom, where I just sit in the room all day and people come and go as they wish. We have skip-level meetings, which is kind of interesting, where I meet with the folks that are two levels below, two levels below skip meetings. Those have been incredible. Took a little while for my leadership team to get used to that, and, but they're in the groove with me now, and they're starting to do some of that on their own. We have all-hands meetings, lunch table, which is a wonderful blessing that we get once, once a week. And then we have sort of a focus on some international students, and student workers are definitely on the increase. So I could speak a lot about this topic, because I love being able to be in a position to have a mentoring capability, and that's where I'll close, is we all need a mentor, just as he said, we all need a mentor. And I don't know about you all, but the best, best return on investment for me when it comes to being a leader is when people come back to you and say they either want to work with you again, or they want to work with you longer, or better yet, they've gone on to lead others. And that's the most incredible pat in the back we can get. So listen, communicate, motivate, and collaborate. I think that's, that's what I took away, and that's what we've been doing here.
That's great. Any questions for Tom? Tom, thanks a lot. That's terrific.
Thank you.
Next, John Clayton. John is our Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness. John? John has, John has some PowerPoint slides.
We can trust Tom with those, couldn't we? Jack, you guys?
Thank you, Dr. Sobchak, for asking me to speak this evening. I want to take a little bit of time here and talk about institutional effectiveness with you and the team that we're building. You know, building off of what my other two colleagues have talked about, the thing I took away from the speech is we're always going to try to be 1% better. We always need to try to see how we can be better tomorrow than what we were today. And that's really the role of the office in which I get, have the privilege to oversee and to work with a great group of team players. So our role here at the college, the role of institutional effectiveness, is to develop and foster a culture of systematic improvement. So that's really what we're charged with, within our area. I personally oversee accreditation and strategic planning for the college. Thank you, Dr. Cook, for the encouragement of the board members, the challenge of the board members to read the systems portfolio. We'll talk about that here a little bit later. I have the privilege of overseeing assessment, evaluation, institutional outcomes. They're in charge of assessment, academic administrative program review, support, institutional accreditation support, and program accreditation support. Also oversee institutional research and planning. Their responsibilities are research. They work very closely with the IS team, with the enterprise data warehouse, which is the, all the information about our students that we get to analyze and try to provide some sense to. Compliance reporting, you know, all those federal regulations that you were talking about earlier, we do a lot of the reporting to help us make sure we stay in compliance with those. And then any question, any research question that is from around campus, we try to, try to provide an answer to in ad hoc reporting. And the last group I get to work with is National Higher Education Benchmark Institute. And if you're not familiar with that group, they collect data from around 400 community colleges across the nation. We take that data, assess it, simulate it, and then develop it and report benchmarks back to those community colleges, so they can see how well they compare against themselves and against other institutions around the nation. They have two main reports that they work on. That's the National Community College Benchmark Project, and then also the Cost and Productivity Today, I'm going to have the privilege of talking to you a little bit about our student satisfaction inventory results. That's developed by Ruffel and Noel Levitz. There's actually 12 different scales that they develop off this instrument. This is a 75-question instrument that our students here at the college take. And if you'll notice at your tables, you guys should have a, a report that was put out on the, Noel Levitz would be the one that has all the chart, the bar charts on it, kind of a light blue color. Noel Levitz actually analyzes these 75 questions and has grouped them into these 12 different categories that you see on the screen. There's over 195 two-year institutions across the nation that participate in this study every year. The scale, as we get into this a little bit further, is a 1 to 7, so the students rank 1 to 7, with 7 being high. And for Johnson County Community College, we had 1,340 students participate this last year. So it is a subsection of our population, but it's a very similar section of what we look at every year. So if you'll turn with me to page three in this report, I was really interested when we got the results back, on how we would look on the safety and security scale. With all the controversy that we had over the past year with the concealed carry and everything going on with that, I was really concerned that our satisfaction with concealed, or with safety and security on this campus might take a dip, might take a hit. As you can see here in the middle set of bar charts, we actually took a significant increase in our satisfaction. Let me give you a little bit of background about this. There's, the students on every question actually rated on two different scales. So they rated on importance, how important is this to them? And then the second thing they rated on is how satisfied are they with the college in meeting that, the question. So what they do then is they take that and they say, "Okay, the student rates how important versus how satisfied they are." They subtract the satisfaction away from the importance, and then they develop what they call a gap score. So importance and satisfaction, importance, you don't really care where it's at in some aspects, satisfaction, you want as high as possible. You want your gap between the two to be as low as possible. So when you look there, you can see we went from a 5.53 to 5.71 in our safety and security. I really think this is because of the positive approach that we took to the conceal and carry, all the efforts of the COPS committee that they put around that effort there. And the other thing I think it is, is the visibility of our safety and security officers. I know Chief Russell does a very good job of making sure they're out visible among the campus students, really tries to put them in the right places, so during high-traffic times, they're able to actually be visible to our students. One of the things Chief Russell came to me just recently and asked for was a traffic report. So he asked me to look at where our students are at and what buildings on what floors so that he can look at and try to place his officers even better into the future. That 1%, trying to be better 1% every day, he's a great example of that. There are several questions that feed into this. Anybody have any idea what the lowest question of satisfaction would have been for safety and security? What's the worst thing on every campus?
Parking.
Parking, exactly. It, it, it was our worst satisfaction. I don't necessarily think it's necessarily an issue here. We're right around the national norm with parking. I think we probably have a walking problem. I think probably the one way that we could probably improve that would be if we offered valet parking for our students. Not ju, not, not saying that we should do that, but I think that would be one way to improve it. If you'll go with me to the top of page three, excuse me, to the bottom of page three. This is one area that we have focused on as an institution over the past year, two years, really a lot since Randy's came, and this is the academic advising and counseling. You can see here, we once again took a great big jump in our satisfaction with advising and counseling on this campus. At the same point in time, we took a jump in the importance of what students placed upon that. But even though they put more importance on it, the satisfaction grew so much more that our gap actually went down. So we have a much smaller gap, which means we're meeting the expectations of our students even better. This is probably due to addition of student advocates, the success advocates. You know, that's been done within the, I think, within the last year, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong on that. And then we did also did a big change in the counseling and advising process for the availability of walk-in students to... for the availability of walk-in students to walk into to get some advice on what courses they should enroll, enroll into.
Excuse me, John?
Yeah.
Dr. Weber, would you have anything to add to that?
No, I love the results. I think that the access has been a big issue. We deployed some strategic counseling initiatives. And I think it's really the returns on it from the board that we're working with, making this team on academic planning. We'll hopefully continue to see the results throughout the course of time.
John, you've got these, as it climbs up there, the difference between those numbers, is that, are those statistically significant?
Yes, and I'll finish that up here in our report. We actually improved on every single one of the 12 scales. And every single one of them were statistically significant at the point 001 level. Which if you know anything about statistics, that's very, very highly significant. So that's, you know, for the mathematicians that may be sitting here in the, in the audience, that's, that's very, very significant. So every single one of them was very highly significant in the increase. Okay, if we go down to registration effectiveness, so we're going to look at the bottom of page two. We'll notice here the same things. You know, importance went up a little bit, satisfaction took a big jump, gap score went down. You know, this is probably due, a couple of years ago, we had some changes in the business office with some improved policies around our online portal payments. Once again, I think some of this is probably due with the questions that feed into this to our counseling center changes. But we also, in that spirit of improving by 1%, and this is, this chart I'm showing you here is not in your report. This actually goes down to look at the individual question item level analysis. And so it gets down to, let's look at individual questions that feed into that scale score and where are we at on that? You can, so if you look at the gap scores on all these, you can see that we're doing relatively well on all of them. The green box is the national mean. Dr. Sobchak is always after me, how are we doing against our peers? So the blue box is actually our peer group.
And who's our peer group?
They're all posted on, on the website. I can't name them off the top of my head.
Is that the League of Innovation? Different group?
A, a lot of them are League of Innovation institutions, but they're going to be colleges similar to size, similar to scope, program offerings, those types of things.
But is the group, is this a group in the, in the Benchmarking Institute's reports that we use?
It's, it's a subset of that. So we, we actually list, I believe it's 23, I think, different institutions that are similar to us. So there, there are going to be suburban institutions that have general, generally the same type of college as what we are.
I don't really know the peers. I just want to be better than whoever they may be. So that's what, that's what we do.
So, so, you know, these are going to be, I, I know College of the Page is one of them. Kirkwood is one of them. So they're, they're going to be, they're colleges like that that are very similar to us in mix.
It's a league.
So typically, we think we would, you know, they would be a higher performing group, somebody that we want to make sure that we do better than. What I want to draw your attention to is even though our gap scores are all lower than our peers and the national mean, there's still an opportunity for improvement here. So let's look at question eight and question 15 here. We see we have a gap score of .7 and .54 on those two. Those are kind of our highest two out of these questions. This is where we can have the opportunity to drill down and get just a little bit better every, every day. And this is something that Dr. Singh has been working on under Dr. McLeod's direction. How can we better schedule our classes on this campus for times that are more convenient for the student? And how are we able to schedule our classes with fewer conflicts? They have been going through and doing analysis on that about how we can better leverage where our classes are being held, how we can better organize that so we can get, improve in this for our students and make it better for our students.
And we're not alone in that challenge because if you look at the national gaps, those are the two highest nationally as well.
Absolutely. And that's what this comparative information allows us to do. Is this something that we're way out of whack or is this something that, that we should be focusing on?
If I may, just to apply break here for a second, this means that this is a literal logistical problem scheduling classes? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, well, the question really asks students, it's a question of, do I want to take a class at 9:00 a.m. and is that class offered at 9:00 a.m.? You know, you will never be able to do it perfectly because you can only offer, you can't offer one section of everything at every hour of the day. So we'll never be perfect there, but when you take that in conjunction with the idea of conflicts, is it possible for us to know what our highest need courses are and make sure that we have sections of those that are available throughout the day? So how many different times can we put an English Comp 1 to make sure that we have opportunities for a student who might need math and English to be able to get both classes and not say, oh, well, I can't get my English class on Monday, Wednesday, Friday? So there is some joining of, of some of these together to come up with an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have a question on the performance gap. Do we want that number to be a wider gap between?
You want a small gap.
Small.
The smaller the better on the gap. Zero means that you're perfectly meeting your students' expectations to how satisfied they are.
Okay, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is the difference between Johnson County Community College and the national community colleges, that difference, we want that to be smaller too?
Actually, you want a bigger, you want a bigger distance.
We want that wider.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That, that means we're doing better than our, our peers.
I got it. Okay, that's, that's kind of what I thought.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I move on? Okay, so just in summary, the, there's 12 scales. We statistically improved from year to year over, on every single scale. And remember, that was at that statistically significant level. We statist, were statistically more significant in outperforming our peers on every single scale. We were statistically significant in outperforming the national mean on every single scale. Of each, so I went and looking at that, I'm going, wow, that's impressive. I've been institutional effectiveness, institutional research for about 18 years. I've never seen that happen. So then I was like, okay, I'm, I'm curious now, I'm digging a little further, let's go to the 75 questions. So I started doing a, a question analysis. We improved from year to year on every single question. Not all more statistically significant, but we did improve in every question. We outperformed our peers on all but two questions and outperformed the national on all but one question. So quite, I was, I was kind of shocked. In my 18 years of being in this field, I have never seen that happen. So this is something that the institution has really been focused on, something we've been able to put our attention to and seen some drastic improvements in. Just one last item and then I'll, I'll yield the rest of my time back to Dr. Sobchak. Accreditation, Dr. Cook hit on that just a little bit ago. We do have a site visit coming up, if you haven't heard, April 30th through May 2nd. Would like for you guys to read the systems portfolio, their PDF was sent in your stuff. It really, it's 125 pages and we tried to cover everything about the college in those 125 pages. Here's the calendar of things that will be happening over the next year. We're going to, we submit our portfolio in June. We'll get some feedback in September of this year. We'll be taking that feedback, providing some quality update and some federal compliance material that we'll send back into HLC. We'll be developing all of our site logistics in February, March, and then have the site visit here in April. If you would like, the whole document is online on our website. That's the link, we got a short link to it, with all of the attached evidence. So in the PDF that you have, it's just the 125 pages, but there's a whole bunch, probably thousands of pages of, of other evidence that's attached at the end of it. So encourage you to read that and be, and be prepared when they come in April.
Thank you for not giving away the ending.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Yes.
Question. John, you referenced in the higher learning, 400 community colleges participated. We have a total of 1,108. And in the, this study, I think you said about, I forget the number, but it wasn't the full amount. Why aren't all of them participating or, and how are they selected, the ones that do participate?
Self-selection. So it's those institutions that are more focused on improvement and benchmarking. We, you know, we do marketing through the Benchmarking Institute to try to increase that participation rate, but it's, it's truly up to the individual institutions to determine whether or not they want to participate.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have a question, Dr. Cook?
Well, not a question. I guess my comment is, I'll talk about it when I get to my KACCT report.
Great. Thank you, John.
Yep.
I, I think it's important for the board to have the opportunity to hear directly from some, some of our leadership here on campus. And you can see the high quality of work that they're doing. Trusty Ingram, you'd mentioned doing things a little bit differently. Do we really take, how have we taken that to heart, what we heard yesterday? And I think through their descriptions of various things that are happening in their areas, I think they pointed some of those things out. So thank you very much and that wraps up my report.
Thank you. Let's see, no old business that I'm aware of and no new business. So already for reports from board liaisons and first up is the Faculty Association. Dr. Arjo with the rebuttal to Dr. McLeod's description of the faculty meeting. No.
Oh, no. I did think it was a good meeting and a very interesting discussion, so I did like the format. I thought that was good. Let me start by just adding the faculty's voice to congratulate the board on the adoption of the budget. Particularly to commend you for not raising tuition. As professors in the classroom, it is always bracing to discover students who do not fit the stereotype of Johnson County is particularly affluent, who struggle to buy textbooks or even to feed themselves. So keeping tuition level, I think, is a very good thing. So we do appreciate that. This is always an exciting week. This has been professional development days and nine-month faculty are back. And we've been swapping summer vacation stories and finding out what people are up to, going to meetings and sessions and all of that. And it's been a very interesting, very exciting. One topic of discussion has been the events of Charlottesville of last week and the broader political fallout from that and of course, the broader political situation, which it was a very horrible manifestation. I do think this gives us as a college a lot to think about. There's been a lot over the last year in the news about events at colleges and universities where controversial speakers have been invited and this has provoked protests and demonstrations that have often themselves degenerated into pretty unpleasant scenes. We've been pretty insulated from that, but I do not think we should get complacent as opposed to somehow we are immune from those types of things as matter of necessity. On Monday, there was a discussion organized, I think rather quickly, by the Multicultural Programming Council that I went to. And I'm very pleased to get a chance to meet the people from that group and I'm hoping to start to get some dialogue with faculty. I'm going to invite them to our next FA meeting and see if we can start working on some events throughout the year to focus on some of the questions that I think these events do raise, particularly for a college, an institute of higher learning. If you'll forgive me for talking a bit like a political philosopher, I do think we face an interesting situation. It's always been kind of paradoxical, political systems like ours, that we extend a very broad tolerance even to views that reject some of the core values of a democratic society and how to balance our commitment to things like free speech, to academic freedom, with our equally important commitment to making sure we provide an environment where everybody can feel safe and welcomed and create the conditions for productive discussion. Those are the sorts of things we're going to continue, I think, to have to think long and hard about as we make our way into the future. So I look forward for opportunities to, as I say, work with some other groups on campus to, to focus on that. And on a bit of a lighter note, two invitations. Our FA meetings, the general membership meetings are going to be on the fourth Thursdays of every month at 3:30. I do not have the rooms secured yet, but I will make sure that gets, gets out. And everybody is always welcome. These are open meetings and we love to have administrators, board members come and give them a chance to talk if they so desire. Secondly, is a longstanding FA tradition to have a party at the beginning of the semester and we will be doing that again this semester. Contrary to usual practice, it will not be tomorrow night. There was a scheduling conflict with Quivera Falls with their clubhouse. So we are going to be having our party next Friday. I've been told there will be a party at Quivera Falls tomorrow night, but it's a wedding reception to which I think none of us are invited. So we should gladly skip that one and we'll convene at our usual time, 4 o'clock next Friday. So thank you very much.
Questions for Dr. Arjo? Thank you very much. Appreciate your report and your comments. Johnson County Education Research Triangle, Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, I have a very brief report. The sales tax revenues for the month of July were also positive. They were 6.75% positive for sales tax in Johnson County. It amounted to $1,446,084.55, which will be directed toward the J-Cert Research and Business Endeavor Partners, K-State Olethwaite Campus, KU Edwards Campus, and KU Clinical Research Center. And the next meeting for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle will be Monday, November 17th. And there's been a pretty big window since our last meeting. So that's why I don't have a more extensive report.
Thank you. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I should have said this earlier, but I really appreciate the branding of Tomorrow Starts Today. You talked a little bit about that at the workshop. It's interesting to hear these reports from all of you and it seems as if we've acclimated that to all of our operations, Tomorrow Starts Today. And Dr. Arjo, I appreciate the work that, that the Faculty Association is doing in conjunction with the team on Tomorrow Starts Today. And if we just take the time to do that, it's pretty impactful. The reason I say it now is that, and I asked the questions of, of John about why certain colleges participate and others don't, is that our next KACCT meeting is September 8th and 9th. Dr. McLeod and I will be attending that meeting. I, I believe that Tomorrow Starts Today with KACCT in terms of the meeting Dr. Sobchak you and I had with Marvin Chance. Marvin Chance is the current president of KACCT. He's from Seward County Community College and liberal. And we met with, with him and Linda Fund a week ago or so. It was a very interesting meeting and I think one of the initiatives that KACCT wants to emphasize is what is our story of the 19 community colleges and how do we impact our communities? And in that process, we talked about what data do we collect? And how do we substantiate that data and how do we report that to the legislature? It's not a matter of just going to ask for more money, which we are pretty good at doing, but on what basis? And so I believe we're going to have buy-in from all 19 community colleges. We'll have discussion. The Council of Presidents, that Dr. McLeod will sit in on that meeting. We'll talk about that as well as the trustees will talk about that. And so I believe that this is a new day for KACCT to kind of come together to talk about how we impact our communities with student success and with economic development, et cetera, et cetera. I know that the state budget, Mr. Carter, is a challenge, as you've reported. I think we'll probably have some discussions as well on other alternative sources of revenue for community colleges. We've been blessed as the community college network to have pretty strong support from the legislature, even though the state funds have diminished. Our percentage of state funding is lower than it has ever been. But the amount of money that we have received has met what we expected at least. So we've been protected, I think, a little bit from the state's financial demise in comparison to other institutions. So that's what, what our agenda is going to be and I, I'm hopeful that Tomorrow Starts Today with KACCT at our September 8th and 9th meeting at Butler Community College in El Dorado. So if any of you are bored on that Friday and Saturday, want to join, Dr. McLeod and I, we'd love to have you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Foundation Liaison Report, Trusty Ingram.
I.
Have no.
Oh, I do, I'm so sorry. I've given it. Because we really don't have a report. I apologize. We didn't meet. And so I really just have an announcement. Forgive me, I apologize.
All right.
We do have a Fall Social coming up this coming Wednesday, October, August 23rd. It is in the Healthcare Simulation Center, which is on the first floor of the CLB. It will be from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. Refreshments will be served and guests will tour the facility with faculty and hear about the SA Finger product. So making sure that all of you have been invited to that and we hope you will join us. And that's my report.
Thank you. That's all the reports. The next item on the agenda is our consent, our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of a series of routine items that are normally considered in one motion and one vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item on the consent agenda be pulled and discussed and voted on separately. Are there any items that anybody would like to remove?
Are there any items that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. We will have an executive session, and I want to mention two things that haven't, one has been mentioned in passing, but the Wall of Honor Ceremony that was held yesterday for Terry Helmick posthumously, Nancy Whedon from our Dining Services and Anita Tebby from Fair Legal was a, was an excellent example of the kind of leadership and dedication and institutional loyalty here. Nancy Whedon was head of our Dining Services, and she put it, she, she had more interaction with students probably than just about anybody because students have to eat. They may not have to go to class, but they have to eat at some point. And the examples of her taking in, particularly international students and just having them live in her house, finding ways to get them tired so they could get on their car, so they could make it to class, it was, all three of them are very heartwarming stories and excellent examples of the faculty and staff that we have at this college. The second thing is the All-Star Appreciation. Our All-Stars are our docents and ushers at the Performing Arts Series and then Carlson Center will be Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. at the Doubletree. That is a group that I think collectively every year gives over $200,000 worth of service. They were there yesterday at the Staff in Service convocation. So whenever you see one of them, I hope we tell them thank you. We do have an executive session request tonight, so I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of reviewing board obligations and statutory requirements relating to employer/employee negotiations with legal counsel pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act exception relating to matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The session will last 20 minutes. We will resume an open meeting in this location. No action will be taken. We would like to invite Dr. Sopjic, Dr. Larson, Tanya Wilson to join us in this executive session. Can I hear such a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. We will start the executive session at 5 till. By our clock in here and be back, we will reconvene no later than 7:15, earlier if We have reconvened at 7:15 in open session after our executive session. We had a little bit of a technology glitch there and weren't able to start our, our executive session subject matter for a few minutes, so we're going to go back into executive session for another 10 minutes. So I would entertain a motion to have the board go into executive session for the purpose of reviewing board obligations and statutory requirements relating to employee, employer/employee negotiations with legal counsel pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act exception relating to matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. With that motion, we would, we will go into executive session for 10 minutes. We will reconvene in this location. No action will be taken during the session. Dr. Sopjic, Dr. Larson, and Tanya Wilson are asked, are invited to attend. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Cook and segmented by Trusty Ingram. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose same sign. Motion carried. We will reconvene at 7:28 p.m. Thank you, gentlemen. Sorry to make you come in and out. We have reconvened at 7:28 p.m. after our second executive session. No action was taken during either executive session. We have no, nothing further on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I was going to offer a non-debatable one.
A motion to adjourn is not debatable.
Not debatable, yes.
Under parliamentary procedure.
Yes.
So I'm going to put Trusty Cross as making the motion. And who wants to claim second? I heard a bunch of them, Trusty Ingram.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say yes.
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 Oppose same sign. Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you all.[1777.13][1777.13][music]